Really?
Clemson guy was.
Last year was, or whenever.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
I mean, we go into closed session, the city council discuss purchase or sale of particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably effective to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property, reduce the price the city would receive for that property.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Make a motion, we go into closed session, the city council discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would likely lead to prejudice or disadvantage position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Hi.
I can know the weather.
We adjourn the closed session. Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Second. Passes five zero. That concludes the regular agenda. Now, anyone that was citizen concerned, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Yep, come on up. Name and address.
Afternoon. My name's Adrian Roy. My address is thirty-six forty-one Dupont Street. That's on the corner of Dupont and Indian Hills Drive. And my wife Jackie's here. We've lived in that house since seventy-one. And I'm here about the speeders that speed by constantly. Probably, I must say about a year ago, I called the police station and they told me to call, I forget who, it was like an engineer or somebody at City Hall. And we discussed it and tried to come up with a solution. And I suggested speed strips. This is on Indian Hills Drive that I'm concerned with. And he said, we can't have speed strips because of the emergency vehicles. I understood that. So I asked him if he could put those red flags, like on the telephone poles. He obliged. Probably the next day, where I live, it's, you probably all know that the hill comes down from the east, the hill from Cheyenne, it comes down the other way. And it's zoom, 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 zoom. And he had them up toward Cheyenne Street by that new big apartment building. The flags were there and the flags are almost across the street from us on the westbound side. Did nothing. The speed limit's thirty going both ways there. I suggested, like they used to have on Hamilton, the signs to tell you how fast you're going. And he said, I don't know what he said, something, it was not feasible, probably because of cost. Okay, this morning, I sat in front of my house. I'm retired. I spend a lot of time outside my house. I counted cars for an hour going both ways. Check this out. From seven o'clock to eight o'clock, going westbound, one hundred and sixty-five cars. Going eastbound, one hundred and seventy-six. That's three hundred and forty-one cars in an hour, one hour. I think I'm a pretty good judge of who's going faster than thirty, because usually it's obvious. And I'm gonna say conservatively, thirty percent, both ways, thirty percent. That's too much. So to me-
That's just one hour, right?
That's roughly a hundred cars an hour that are speeding.
It's just, yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, you said-
I don't hear very well.
Okay, I'm sorry. And that was just for one hour?
One hour. And it's, 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 that's, that's probably working people between seven and eight o'clock.
Right.
That they're going to work. And over the years, as you all know, with, with, it used to be outer belt drive, used to be the end of the line. Now, it's utter north or whatever. You got the grocery store, you got the church, and that's without, that's without school traffic. School's out. No school traffic. So throw that in, it's, and it's, it's girls, it's guys, it's young, it's old. Plus, where I live, I'm a little bit up and I can look down. And you would be surprised. We all know. So that just adds to it. On the other side of the street from me, this is the sixteen-hundred block that I live in, the sidewalk where people walk their dogs, where kids ride their bikes, where people are out just enjoying the day, the sidewalk is five feet from the curb. Five feet with these maniacs going back and forth. It's crazy. It's a matter of time. It's a matter of time. One way to curb it, slow them down. Okay, what brought me here yesterday, my wife and I, beautiful day, Sunday drive, we're going up Country Club. Guess what we saw just south of Forty-Fifth Street? Those signs that show you how fast you're going. Northbound, southbound. Country Club. Who goes on Forty-Fifth and Country Club? People that live beyond there. That's it. Nobody's joyriding out there, very few. I counted the traffic. My place for an hour, but the expensive signs up there saying how fast you go at Country Club on Forty-Fifth and Country Club, they can put one across the street and on my side of the street. I'll put the damn things in. Thank you. Thank you.
Any responses? They're, by the way, those are not permanent, they're movable.
I'm sorry?
They're not permanent, they're movable, so they can be moved.
Well, one more thing, probably in the last year, like I say, I spend a lot of time outside, I saw two police cars with radar, both times I go over there by the old sunshine, they're not there five minutes. Boom. They both caught, one guy caught a pickup, one guy caught a car going westbound, never came back. Never came back. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Council, I'll follow up with both Public Works and Police to see what we can do.
Sir, did you hear that?
Sorry, please park your-
I follow up tomorrow with both the Public Works Department and Police to see what we can do to get people slowed down.
You'll be following up?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One other, one other thing real quick. They took those solar powered speed limit signs out. There was one on Hamilton and there was one on Floyd. And I bet that's been well over a year and they've never been put back in. And I personally think they make a huge difference, too. I know a lot of people don't, a lot of people think they-
Well, they make you realize your speed.
They took them out because of some sort of mechanical issue. I don't know if we've ever gotten it back.
Battery powered kind of issue.
All right. Anyone else be heard? Go to council concerns.
I'm glad Darrell's here. I wanted to see if there was a-
Thank you very much.
If there was an update on the YMCA building. I drove by that yesterday at Seventh and Nebraska. And it's like, it's like a forest. There are trees growing on the roof and all the way down the north side and on the east side of the street. And yet-
Amazingly enough, I actually had a phone conversation with the contractor that was supposedly been given the keys to the building to manage his contractors going out and making repairs. Over the course of that conversation, he made it abundantly clear that he had not been paid for the services that he had been hired for to date. NOR had the asbestos abate contractor that had cleaned out the preparation room and both of them were looking for him to try to track him down to get their money.
I knew it. You know what? I talked to the, what did we say? What did I tell the fellow that-
Paul Bernard.
Paul Bernard. We had a nice little conversation after council when he came up here. And I made it real clear to him how I felt, how we've been through this before and, you know, we need to see some, some kind of action.
Yeah.
He was, promised the world.
My phone call after that conversation was not returned either, so.
So Paul's the one who didn't pay-
Paul's the gentleman that came from California.
For the, yeah, but he's the one who did not pay for the services?
He did not pay for the services, no.
Okay, I think we should get a city contractor and attach it to, the lien to his property then, because it's, it's, it provides a heck of a lot, but I, I wanted to raise that-
I was hoping to be able to have, you know, a communication with him today, but he returned phone calls.
Well, I appreciate anything you can do, Darrell, to follow up on-
Absolutely.
Boy Street, is that mess all cleaned up?
Yeah, there was some fill that needed to be left done, that he did sell the property to the neighboring property owner, so that they could keep the garage and expand their yard. And last I was involved in a conversation with that portion of it, Jeff Hanson was working with him on the zoning issues as far as the total square footage of accessory structures. So that was moving forward.
Additionally, I wanted to mention, I wanted to acknowledge a journal, and Ian in particular, he wrote, he was one of the writers of the articles, but I wanted to acknowledge and thank them for the five-day series on homelessness in Sault- in Saultland. And, and, and I guess for council's sake, I, I wanna just state that, from my perspective, the issue of homelessness is an important issue in the city, and I think it's one that's probably gonna require a collaborative, public and private work on. And, and I know Ship, Matt Omen, the executive director, and, and his staff have done a great job for probably three years now, trying to put that all together. And I'm very appreciative of that as well, but, and everything they've done to kind of heighten the awareness to it, but, but it's, I went to the meeting a couple weeks ago and Alex was there as well, and I know everybody here has been to one or more of the meetings. And, and, and I guess my, my question is, to all of us seated, seated here, what can we do to participate in this issue that really is very prevalent in the community and, and one that needs attention? And I don't, there've been a number of solutions brought up. One was the idea of a super shelter. Another, basically, they have a couple of those in a couple of cities, and, and a third one that, that Frank Lemire was mentioning in, I think, not Albuquerque, New Mexico, but there was another place in New Mex- they've mentioned Rapid City and maybe Pier, and then I think there's one in New Mexico, but, but it all boils down to funding. And that's really the issue, but I, well, I guess at some point, I would like to see us have some kind of discussion about homelessness and to see if there's anything that, that we can do and what part we can play in this. I know the detox committee is meeting in another week, week and a half, hopefully formulating a plan and trying to move forward. That may be the most reasonable approach right now, in terms of what can be afforded, and I'm not even sure that that can be.
Is the detox center, is that what you said?
Yes. And, and from all indications, Indian Health Services isn't participating financially. So at some point, I think we need to, as, as a government, I think we have a responsibility for the care, the health, the welfare of, of citizens, and we just, I know healthcare's not our business, but, but we need to be actively involved in this somehow. And I, as it continues, I guess I'll keep my ear to the, what's going on and participate in meetings, but I'm hopeful that someday we can get together and talk and try to figure out what, if anything, there is that we can-
You know, they're, they're part of our whole, our whole people.
Yes.
And my whole, my thing is, nothing will get done until we have a director that's gonna direct everybody. Because right now, we have, we have a whole lot of people coming up with a whole lot of different ideas, but nobody's really trying to put them all together. And, and I talked, I talked to Pete about this a little earlier, and this is kind of a loose, when we got Matt Salvatore in here for our Parson Rec Director, we finally started to get things done, because we had one person that was taking care of what we need to be taken care of. And so we could go to him. Right now, we don't have anybody that we can really go to, to, to really bring on what we need.
Well, yeah, that's the difficult part, Rhonda, on, on behalf of Ship, has really been involved in pushing the issue forward and continuing to meet and, and to try to come up with solutions. They've made some trips, they're gathering information. I will be honest, this is, of all the committees that I've, meetings I've gone to over the last four and a half years, this is a group of people who consistently come back and, and started out with maybe fifty, sixty people involved, and they're still, how many people were at the last meeting?
A lot.
A lot of people.
And that's where I was gonna say, disagree, Rhonda, is that I think we have good people.
Well, I'm not saying that.
And, and, and people that I think would be willing to take on that role. But to Pete's point, you gotta have funding, you gotta have a location, you have to have a master plan, you have to have some tangibles, and I think that right now, that's where the struggle is, is they were trying to-
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't hear that last part.
Um, we opened all of the bids and that's when we discovered that there was paperwork that was not filled out as part of the bid. Since it's federally funded, we have extra sheets that get filled out as part of the bid and, and not any of the bidders filled those out, so.
And they were all notified of why?
Y- yes, yep.
So then are they all gonna re-bid again then, is that the thing?
We hope so.
That's what I hope.
Yeah.
D is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the annual sidewalk grant program. Ten or actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding us consulting services agreements to CNBA architects for the Lewis and Clark Park ticketing building project. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting Group for design of the police headquarters parking lot and alley replacement project. Eleven are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment to Mark Albanese for the arch pipe extension project. B is a resolution approving settlement of the workers' comp claim and authorizing payment. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have questions. Thirteen are receipt amendments. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Set agenda passes five zero fourteen. It's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Gordon Drive signal replacement project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero fifteen. It's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the annual storm inlet rehabilitation project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero sixteen. It's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the annual utility lining project. I'll move that.
Second.
I did a second. I don't like the end of this from the competition.
Second.
Make sure Pete got that second.
Better not forget to vote, eh?
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Second and third?
Second.
Passes five zero. That concludes the regular agenda. Now, anyone that with citizen concerns, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Yep, come on up. Name and address.
Afternoon. My name's Adrian Roy. My address is thirty-six forty-one Dupont Street. That's on the corner of Dupont and Indian Hills Drive. And my wife Jackie's here. We've lived in that house since seventy-one. And I'm here about the speeders that speed by constantly. Probably, I must say about a year ago, I called the police station and they told me to call, I forget who, it was like an engineer or somebody at City Hall, and we discussed it and tried to come up with a solution. And I suggested speed strips. This is on Indian Hills Drive that I'm concerned with. And he said, we can't have speed strips because of the emergency vehicles. I understood that. So I asked him if he could put those red flags, like on the telephone poles. He obliged. Probably the next day, where I live, it's, you probably all know that the hill comes down from the east, the hill from Cheyenne comes down the other way, and it's zoom, 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 zoom. And he, he had them up, up toward Cheyenne Street by that new big apartment building. The flags were there, and the flags are almost across the street from us on the westbound side. Did nothing. The speed limit's thirty going both ways there. I suggested, like they used to have on Hamilton, the, the signs to tell you how fast you're going. And he said, I don't know what he said, something, it was not feasible, probably because of cost. Okay, this morning, I sat in front of my house. I'm retired. I spend a lot of time outside my house. I counted cars for an hour going both ways. Check this out. From seven o'clock to eight o'clock, going westbound, one hundred and sixty-five cars. Going eastbound, one hundred and seventy-six. That's three hundred and forty-one cars in an hour, one hour. I think I'm a pretty good judge of who's going faster than thirty, because usually it's obvious. And I'm gonna say conservatively, thirty percent, both ways, thirty percent. That's too much. So to me-
That's just one hour, right?
That's roughly a hundred cars an hour that are speeding.
It's just, yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, you said that-
I don't hear very well.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And that was just for one hour?
One hour. And it's, 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 that's, that's probably working people between seven and eight o'clock.
Right.
That they're going to work. And over the years, as you all know, with, with, it used to be outer belt drive, used to be the end of the line. Now, it's utter north or whatever. You got the grocery store, you got the church, and that's without, that's without school traffic. School's out. No school traffic. So throw that in, it's, and it's, it's girls, it's guys, it's young, it's old. Plus, where I live, I'm a little bit up, and I can look down, and you would be surprised. We all know. So that just adds to it. On the other side of the street from me, this is the sixteen-hundred block that I live in, the sidewalk where people walk their dogs, where kids ride their bikes, where people are out just enjoying the day. The sidewalk is five feet from the curb. Five feet with these maniacs going back and forth. It's crazy. It's a matter of time. It's a matter of time. One way to curb it, slow 'em down. Okay, what brought me here yesterday, my wife and I, beautiful day, Sunday drive. We're going up Country Club. Guess what we saw just south of Forty-Fifth Street? Those signs that show you how fast you're going. Northbound, southbound, Country Club. Who goes on Forty-Fifth and Country Club? People that live beyond there. That's it. Nobody's joyriding out there, very few. I counted the traffic. My place for an hour, but the expensive signs up there saying how fast you go at Country Club on Forty-Fifth and Country Club, they can put one across the street and on my side of the street. I'll put the damn things in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any responses?
They're, by the way, those are not permanent, they're movable.
I'm sorry?
They're not permanent, they're movable, so they can be moved.
Well, oh, one more thing. Probably in the last year, like I say, I spend a lot of time outside, I saw two police cars with radar. Both times I go over there by the old sunshine, they're not there five minutes. Boom. They both caught, one guy caught a pickup, one guy caught a car going westbound, never came back. Never came back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Mayor Council, I'll follow up with both Public Works and Police to see what we can do.
Sir, did, did you hear that?
Sorry, please, Parker.
I follow up tomorrow with both the Public Works Department and Police to see what we can do to get people slowed down.
You'll be following up?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One other, one other thing real quick. They took those solar-powered speed limit signs out. There was one on Hamilton and there was one on Floyd, and I bet that's been well over a year and they've never been put back in. And I, I personally think they make a huge difference, too. I know a lot of people don't, a lot of people think they-
Well, they make you realize your speed.
They took them out because of some sort of mechanical issue. I don't know if we've ever gotten it back.
Battery-powered kind of issue.
All right. Anyone else be heard? Go to council concerns.
I'm glad Darrell's here. I wanted to see if there was a-
Thank you very much.
If there was an update on the YMCA building. I drove by that yesterday at Seventh and Nebraska, and it's like, it's like a forest. There are trees growing on the roof and all the way down the north side and on the east side of the street. And yet-
Amazingly enough, I actually had a con, a phone conversation with the contractor that was supposedly been given the keys to the building to manage his contractors going out and making repairs. Over the course of that conversation, he made it abundantly clear that he had not been paid for the services that he had been hired for to date. NOR had the asbestos abate contractor that had cleaned out the preparation room, and both of them were looking for him to try to track him down to get their money.
I knew it. You know what? I talked to the, what did we say? What did I tell the, the fellow that-
Paul Bernard.
Paul Bernard. We had a nice little conversation after council when he came up here. And I made it real clear to him how I felt, how we've been through this before and, you know, we, we need to see some, some kind of action.
Yeah.
He was, promised the world.
My phone call after that conversation was not returned either, so.
So Paul's the one who didn't pay-
Paul's the gentleman that came from Cali-
Yeah, but he's the one who did not pay for the services?
He did not pay for the services, no.
Okay, I, I think we should get a city contractor and attach it to the lien to his property then, because it's, it's, it provides a heck of a lot, but I, I wanted to raise that concern.
I was hoping to be able to have, you know, a communication with him today, but he did return phone calls.
Well, I appreciate anything you can do, Darrell, to follow up on-
Absolutely, yeah.
Boy Street, is that all mess all cleaned up?
Yeah, there was some fill that needed to be left done, that he did sell the property to the neighboring property owner, so that they could keep the garage and expand their yard. And last I was involved in a conversation with that portion of it, Jeff Hanson was working with him on the zoning issues as far as the total square footage of accessory structures. So that was moving forward.
Good.
Additionally, I wanted to mention, I wanted to acknowledge the journal, and Ian in particular, he wrote, he was one of the writers of the articles. But I wanted to acknowledge and thank them for the five-day series on homelessness in Su, in Saultland. And, and I guess for council's sake, I, I, I wanna just state that, from my perspective, the issue of homelessness is an important issue in the city, and I think it's one that's probably gonna require a collaborative public and private work on. And, and I know Ship, Matt Omen, the executive director, and, and his staff have done a great job for probably three years now, trying to put that all together. And I'm very appreciative of that as well, but, and everything they've done to kind of heighten the awareness to it, but, but it's, I went to the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Alex was there as well, and I know everybody here has been to one or more of the meetings. And, and, and I guess my, my question is to all of us seated, seated here, what can we do to participate in this issue that really is very prevalent in the community and, and one that needs attention? And I don't, there's been a number of solutions brought up. One was the idea of a super shelter. Another, basically, they have a couple of those in a couple of cities, and, and a third one that, that Frank Lemire was mentioning in, I think, not Albuquerque, New Mexico, but there was another place in New Mex, they've mentioned Rapid City and maybe Pier, and then I, I think there's one in New Mexico, but, but it all boils down to funding. And that's really the issue. But I, what, I, I guess at some point, I would like to see us have some kind of discussion about homelessness and to see if there's anything that, that we can do, and what part we can play in this. I know the detox committee is meeting in another week, week and a half, hopefully formulating a plan and trying to move forward. That may be the most reasonable approach right now in terms of what can be afforded, and I'm not even sure that that can be.
Is the detox center, is that what you said?
Yes. And, and from all indications, Indian Health Services isn't participating financially. So at some point, I think we need to, as, as a government, I think we have a responsibility for, to care, the health, the welfare of, of citizens, and we just, I know healthcare is not our business, but, but we need to be actively involved in this somehow. And I, as it continues, I guess I'll keep my ear to the, what's going on and participate in meetings, but I'm hopeful that someday we can get together and talk and try to figure out what, if anything, there is that we can-
You know, they're, they're part of our whole, our whole people.
Yes.
And, and my whole, my thing is, nothing will get done until we have a director that's gonna direct everybody. Because right now, we have, we have a whole lot of people coming up with a whole lot of different ideas, but nobody's really trying to put them all together. And, and I, I talked, I talked to Pete about this a little earlier, and this is kind of a loose, when, when we got Matt Salvatore in here for our Parson Rec Director, we finally started to get things done because we had one person that was taking care of what we need to be taking care of. And so we could go to him. Right now, we don't have anybody that we can really go to, to, to really bring on what we need.
Well, yeah, that's the difficult part, Rhonda. On, on behalf of Ship, it's really been involved in pushing the issue forward and continuing to meet and, and to try to come up with solutions. They've made some trips, they're gathering information. I will be honest, this is, of all the committees that I've, meetings I've gone to over the last four and a half years, this is a group of people who consistently come back and, and started out with a num, maybe fifty, sixty people involved, and they're still, how many people were at the last meeting?
A lot.
A lot of people.
And that's where I was gonna say, disagree, Rhonda, is that I think we have good people.
Well, I'm not saying that.
And, no, 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 and, but, and people that I think would be willing to take on that role. But to Pete's point, you gotta have funding, you gotta have locations, you have to have a master plan, you have to have some tangibles. And I think that right now, that's where the struggle is, is they were trying to apply or plead with Indian Health Services to kind of fund a project, and it sounds like there might not be an appetite for that. So then you kind of go back to the drawing board and say, well, what can we afford and what can we do?
Right.
And I think at that point, once you get a game plan, hopefully there are more people, or we can find that person that's able to kind of take the helm. Cause I think Matt, Matt does great work, and I think Captain Clay's is doing a great job.
Yeah, Lisa's doing a great job, too.
Everyone there is super passionate and really trying to take action and do their due diligence, which I appreciate. But, yeah, it's-
I get it. I mean, I, I understand.
It's a big issue to tackle, and it's really taxing on a lot of different industries in our community.
It is.
And I think everything from police force to retail, I mean, I think.
Well, I just, I just wanted to share my thoughts, and maybe we can-
Yeah.
Start to look at that and-
I agree with Mr. Greckin on his comments that he's made, and I think we do need to be proactive. The journal did point out in, in their opinion page, it's, it's everyone's concern, not just councils, not just hospitals, not. But I think we need to be proactive. And I think, and what you're saying is to be proactive is, it would help if we got monthly reports of what the data is, because I have not heard that about the getting assistance from the federal agencies. And I know we had a congressman at our meeting, and, and he pledged to help out in any way he can. So I think, maybe Pete, some of your frustration might be the follow-up part of, the follow-up piece of whoever the director is, whether it's Matt Omen from Ship, or if it's someone else, but that we, we get some updates on a regular, fairly constant basis. Cause then that makes it all, makes us all accountable for what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm glad you raised that.
Yeah, I agree, and it needed to be raised. Maybe this is an issue that needs to go to Washington next year, you know, I don't know. But my understanding is Indian Health Services has pretty much made it perfectly clear that there wouldn't be any funding available there now.
And it sounded like Congressman King said he was going to try to be proactive and looking for opportunities for that. But to Dan's point, if someone could come here to council and update all of us, maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, we get updated, then the community gets updated, and the, and the media's really good about picking up on this.
They are, and-
But that's kind of my whole point. If you have a go-to person, that, I think it could be a full-time job, actually.
Well, sure.
And, I mean, right now, what, you know, you, you have a lot of people working really hard on it. I get, I really appreciate it, and I, and I understand it. But you need a go-to person that's gonna be able to carry forward and get all the information that that person learns to everybody else so that, that can help. So-
There are grants, you know, we help fund the Chef's Their House, we help fund a lot of those kinds of activities. So it may, the problem may be that some of that funding may have to be redirected, which is always difficult, because when you've given to an organization for thirty or forty years, that doesn't mean you have to continue to do that, but it's gonna take a, you know, you're gonna have to have a just community discussion about that. The other thing that's terribly important, and I don't think we're serious enough about it yet in this community, I hope we're getting more serious, is the census. We're gonna, we, we're gonna miss people in our community because they're going to be afraid to be counted, even if they're legal.
Sure.
And if they're illegal, they still should be counted. And they're gonna be afraid to be counted, and we need a, we need a plan as to how we're gonna help the Census Bureau count those people, because the dollars are significant with road use tax, with CBDG funds, with your ability to acquire different grants like that. And if we get a bad count that shows our population hasn't gone up, which I don't understand how when you have a lot of new houses here, I don't understand it. But if that's the case, then we're staying where we're at. So that group, I hope, is working on how they're gonna count those homeless people, because, you know, what's, what do we get for gas tax, Donna, for a person? How much?
Hundred twenty-one.
How, how much?
Hundred twenty-one dollars.
So if there's three hundred homeless people out there, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And they won't get counted, they, if they don't get counted, we don't get gas tax on them. So I just hope we have a plan as to how we are going to make those people feel comfortable in giving data.
I'd be happy to talk to Matt and maybe sometime in the near future have, I know he was here just, what, four, five, six weeks ago, but maybe we can get an update. If not in the next month, certainly before they, they'll probably meet again in September. They've been doing it just about every three months. And Matt would probably be happy to take the lead and, and share some information with us. But again, just wanted to throw that out, but, but I did want to acknowledge your journal, because I think it was a great series of articles that really heightened everybody's awareness. If you're reading the paper, you can't help but miss what's going on. And, and I think there are, that's the thing about this community that is really always fascinating to me. There are people who just have this, again, marvelous, marvelous capacity to step up and help out when there are problems, both in quite a bit, private and public. So anything we can do, I, I hope that we can be involved in it. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate the mayor and the bandits. Playing, they played in the championship game, that's a huge, huge accomplishment. They only missed it by like four, four points, I think, is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
But it was a great game. It was a great game.
Still was second place.
You know what? Second place is better than bottom.
Thank God the league doesn't give second-place trophies, Dan, cause we wouldn't have taken it.
I would have. I'd take a third-place trophy, you know that.
Always got next year, that's how, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, Mr. Mayor.
Don't bet on it, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, I want to thank you. And you know what? We, we really do owe the mayor a bunch of thanks, because people love this football thing. And he brings people to town, he gives Sioux City a good name when they go out of town, and he loves Sioux Cities, just like we all do. So I want to thank you for that. The other thing is, we have the Fourth of July coming, which would be, we all know when. Hot Boy Scouts, when? When's, when's Fourth of July? Come on, it's Wednesday.
July?
Fourth of July.
Okay.
Independence Day.
It's Independence Day. Anyway, I just want to remind everybody to be careful out there. You can shoot, shoot the fireworks off on Tuesday and Wednesday. Is it from one to eleven? Is that what it's-
Eleven. PM to eleven PM, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Eleven to eleven? Is that what, is that, that's what I thought, one.
One to eleven.
Yeah, so please be careful out there. It's very important, and we don't want to see anybody get hurt. We want everybody to enjoy the, the two days they have, and that's all I got. So, go ahead.
Well, I gotta hold it.
I'm not surprised.
Um, let's see, I was gonna talk about a couple things coming up. Obviously, on Wednesday, I hope you're enjoying the Fourth of July. Tomorrow night, there is an Explorers game with a fireworks show, fireworks display, that's always a great time. Then on Friday-
Explorers in first place, too?
Yes, that's another thing I forgot to mention.
They're playing really well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, above and beyond, everyone else will be.
I think it's like thirty-five and twelve or something, if I, if I got my, my numbers right. But yeah, they're doing awesome.
Playing incredibly well.
Good job, Explorers.
No doubt. And then, um, let's see, on Friday, there is Dan and Pete's favorite event. They come around only a few times a year. We got a parade, the big parade.
Parade.
So that'll be downtown, Big Parade and Mardi Gras Festival. So make sure to check that out Friday evening. Saturday, Saturday in the park.
I'll be there.
Um, that'll be a lot of fun as well. Music festival up at Grandview Park, so make sure to come up and enjoy that. Always a great event in the community. And-
Drum roll.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, I, I did get a complaint that there were quite a few wasps nests, kind of accumulating in different areas, especially at pools, in the restroom, and in lifeguard areas.
Was it at leaf?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so more, develop a plan annually of having someone go out to fumigate or whatever we need to do those. Just hitting those restrooms and lifeguard areas at least just once, once a season, if that's enough. And just give me an update when that, once we have that, that'd be great. Otherwise, that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, a couple of items. Last week, June twenty-fifth, we had item eight on the agenda, Bridgeport West. It was a condemnation action that was approved by Council four-zero-one. I want to make a motion, please, to reconsider that item eight from last week, Bridgeport West. And I'm hoping I'll get a second. Some facts have come to light. I think I, at least on my vote, just talking about my vote, I think I was premature on that vote. I think it can come at a later time. I don't want anyone to be under the, you know, condemnation's kind of a last resort thing, anyway. And I just don't want anybody to be under the pressure or stress of condemnation when they're negotiating with us in good faith. So I would make a motion to reconsider item eight from last week's agenda, Bridgeport West. It was a resolution authorizing and directing the city attorney and/or her assistants to proceed under the power of eminent domain, as authorized under chapters six A and six B of the Code of Iowa, to condemn certain property in connection with the Bridgeport West Improvement Project Phase Five, property commonly known as twenty-three-hundred and twenty-three-ten Boulevard of Champions.
And I'll second.
Right, and the procedure, based on the result of the vote, would be if the reconsideration is approved today, then it would come back at a subsequent council meeting for a revote on the item as it was presented last week on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so how long?
Next week.
We could have it on for Monday, couldn't we?
Sure. It's just a resubmission of the same item with a different date, so it could be brought back on Monday.
Electronically, or?
I'll call the vote. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye. Thank you. And then the last item, Mayor, and I just want to follow up with what Rhonda was saying, but the Sioux City Journal did an excellent job on their opinion piece on fireworks in city. Follow law, be safe, be courteous. I know some of the fireworks are going off now. I really hope we can hold off till tomorrow at one o'clock PM and fire them off between one PM and eleven PM, just be-
Not tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, it is tomorrow.
July third and fourth. July third, and then July fourth, one PM to eleven PM. Just be courteous of- Stick around a helper. Who is, who your surroundings are, who your neighbors are, whether there's any medical conditions, whether they have pets and animals that might, might need special attention. But as Rhonda pointed out, most of all, make sure everyone stays safe over the holiday this week. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Scott?
Yes, aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Yep.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Scouts want to come up and get a picture with the council? I know somebody sent me an email here to talk to you, we'll do that, but you guys want to come up here?